All right, well, it's eight o'clock. So, and I think everybody on our end is here. So, the first matter of business is we have minutes from November, which I distributed a couple of weeks ago. So, I know not everybody was at the November meeting, but Evan drew them up and I distributed them. So, could I have a motion to accept them?
Sure.
And second, so I'm sorry, motion to move. All in favor?
Yep.
Thank you. Anybody opposed? Okay.
I should probably abstain.
Why did you abstain?
Well, I wasn't there and I don't think I received them also.
Okay. Oh, I might not have, because you weren't at that meeting, I think I didn't send it to you.
Right, probably makes sense.
Okay, then we also had minutes from January. So, I will make a motion to approve those. Could I have a second? Second? All righty. All in favor? Okay?
Yes.
Thank you. All righty, so we are on to our first matter. Is it, how do you pronounce the?
I just call her Erica. It's just easy.
It's Erica. Great, thank you. And do you have the?
Miles.
Miles, yes, thank you very much.
What as well.
Thank you.
Picture of the deck. So, what we're proposing to do is add to an existing deck that's about 50 square feet. We'd like to enlarge it to about 218 square feet. So, in order to do so, we need secret variance. We need to over on the existing coverage as it is. So, just to add about 600 feet square feet, we need to remove the secret variance. So, here's the existing deck. So, we're just plucking it out. We don't need any extra variance for this part, setbacks. We're just looking for.
Coverage.
Coverage. Which again, the existing lot is over on coverage. So, no matter what we do, we would need a variance.
Right, so how much are you over currently?
With, with the proposal?
Uh, no, just as existing.
So, 118?
118.
And we go one, yeah, we do it 168.
168. And you're changing it from 50 square feet to?
218.
218 square feet from those.
Let's just get a little bit more usable area on the deck. If you look at the picture, you can see it's basically a very small deck. They can't really do much with it. So, we're just increasing it slightly, just to have a table and some.
Pushing it out?
Pushing it out, yeah.
But I went by the property, but I was not able to get back there. I did get a glimpse, but I didn't, it was a little hard to see.
Yeah.
Did anybody else?
Yeah.
Oh, well, you looked at Google.
Yeah.
You, you got?
I was there, yes.
Any comments?
Well, I mean, the fact that the patient is straight through, the question is whether we want to create a variance or not. I, I arguably, one could, because we don't like in general to add to an already existing variance, I suppose, one could ask if they could reduce it.
Right, why do you need to go up to 218? Is there a particular?
No, it's just to fit table and chairs. It's really a 14 or 12, and then pass the bump out and slate 10 feet. So, it's really the smallest I would feel comfortable with, table and chairs.
So, there is an existing enclosed porch?
Yeah, that's right.
And that is not changing?
That is not changing. The only thing we're doing is changing the windows and the look of it. Because you can see in the pictures, it's kind of in disrepair. So, what we're proposing is to change the windows and siding on that.
And you're not changing the ground cover, correct?
No.
It's just the above.
Yeah, there's going to be two piers that we're putting or supporting the deck. So, that's the existing porch there. So, we're changing the siding and then between the windows.
So, the, so the existing pavers that are underneath?
They have arch cans underneath there, so.
The area that's coming out with the new deck, there will be some coverage on this. It's called the second floor underneath that is going to be some grassy area?
Yeah, it's going to stay grassy area as long as it can stay.
There'll be some concrete kind of footing supporting the deck or?
Two supports, yeah, two concrete, there are 12 inches. Yeah, 12 inches in diameter. Like I said, we tried to make the deck as small possible, just to fit some tables and chairs to get some more usable space. Because the kitchen's right off that area. So, for them to barbecue, they're always walking down to a lower patio. And it just makes it a little bit more convenient for them to have a little area for table and chair.
I gather we haven't been any objections by any of the neighbors?
No, yeah, we were in front of the department to plead our case and they, it grants us to come to the Zone Board of Appeals.
Board members?
I mean, I, I went by there as well, and I, I mean, one thing I noticed was there wasn't any kind of neighbors right?
Right.
Next to the yard there, so it was.
Yes, this side here is a bit like an apartment complex or something. This is well screened with some, some outerways, and this is far enough away that I don't think it's going to pose.
Right, the, the house seems to be sited on the very side of the.
It makes a very tight driveway, because even when I try to pull in to do some site visits, I'm parking here and then it's really to park, to park out. But they have to kind of turn around just to get out of their driveway. So, it is tight, and this was the only logical place to put the deck.
Right.
Because it's off the kitchen.
Help me in the favor, sorry, when is the house, when was the house built?
Oh, um.
Very roughly.
About 1900s, yeah. It's a very charming house inside, nice front porch and a nice brick walkway that leads to the front. And they're doing some improvements inside, changing kitchens.
Yeah, I'm familiar with the property and being on Broadway, you want to be able to utilize the backyard and.
Right.
Have some livable outdoor space.
Outdoor spaces up.
I guess my only two questions, the first one was, why do you need to go to that size? But I, I see what you're saying, it is very small and you would need to, to make it bigger to accommodate any outside living. Only other question is, is there any coverage that, and I couldn't see this when I went to see the property, there any coverage you could give back so that that overall number is not as high? Did you see anything, John, anything?
Well, the only thing I thought of was the front porch. I suppose you could, you could do something with that. That, that is a major sort of architectural decision.
That's part of the original house, yeah, I don't think I would want to touch that.
Just answering the question.
Yeah.
Okay.
I was just curious, what, away from the house, there's, I think it says slate walk or whatever?
Yeah, this here.
What do you say, it looks sort of free flowing.
It's, it's, um, it's about 56 square feet and it's just a slate walk. I don't know where it went to, maybe it went, went to shed or something on the property, but.
Something that's, something that's no longer there.
Probably.
Uh, yeah, as far as a house or a shed, yeah, there's nothing there. But, I mean, what does that do to take that out?
It's coverage, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't get you under or back where you work.
No, but it mitigates a bit.
And, and I mean, the coverage yet, I understand it's over, but this is not really affecting anything. It could be something charming for the property, I can speak to the owners about taking it away.
Because I don't see any other sort of coverage. I mean, front of the house is, as you said, that's a pretty major.
Yeah.
Decision to be, and I don't really see any other.
Well, we're counting your, also, you know, walkways, stone walls, we're counting stone walls and that, we're counting everything that's.
Well, yeah, because we have to. Because that's what the.
The driveway doesn't count though, I didn't.
Driveway does not count, no.
Understood that, but yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And there's a back patio there, but that doesn't look particularly large.
No, it's just sitting up outside.
Yeah.
All right, any other comments from, and I don't believe anybody's in the audience to be heard on this, right? I'm going to make a motion to approve the variance if you remove the slate walkway, that, that sort of extraneous, that will give us a little bit back at least on coverage. It's a fairly minor, it does increase the coverage. As Judd says, it really does increase your ability to live in the back of that house, especially when it's on Broadway. And it's really not out of character with what I saw in the rest of the neighborhood, nor does it really seem to impinge on any neighbors. So, with the provision that you remove that slate walkway, which I believe you said it's about 56?
56.
Square feet.
Calculations, yes.
In coverage, I will make a motion. Does anybody care to second it?
I'll second it.
Let's vote from the right, oh, sorry, yeah.
I have a question on that, on the step walk. I mean, is there any elevation change there? I mean, by removing that slate walk, I'm not, I'm not familiar with that part of the property.
So, I mean.
Will, will, will there, will there?
That's a good point, thank you, yeah. So, there is some topography that climbs up. So, where the steps are, it changes great from 182 to 1E. So, there are steps to kind of help with that transition.
Just, just two feet?
Yeah, two feet.
There, okay.
So, and it's, you know, two feet needs four steps, so that's what's there, four steps.
Okay, all right, that, that, I'm better with that. I just wanted to see.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point, thank you, yeah. And that's what I see is there's four steps there and the topography goes up two feet or down two feet, depending on.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
It really serves no purpose, I don't see why it was there.
Right, okay. So, there is a motion, Judd? Yes or no?
Yes.
Right.
Given, yeah, the removal, sure, yes.
John?
Yeah, I'll vote yes also. We might note that the variance has been increased by like 3.2%.
Yeah, 3.2%.
Less than 4%.
Yep, absolutely.
Yes.
On a yes and what about you, Ken? All right.
Thank you for your time.
Can I get your name of the?
Ludacris. Yes, all right.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Great, thank you. Okay, Mick Lawhorn. Back again.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry.
Lizette. First of all, I want to say that the agenda said that you're having three variants.
Right.
And after last time?
Yes.
It was just us and Albert. They were here to talk about F A R.
Yes.
Have you received my letter?
Yes.
Explain why we would like to. Thank you. This, we might have discussed this last time, but to refresh your memories. We're requesting a variance for increasing the floor area. The house is already nonconforming, and I think it's mostly because it has finished attic, which actually also qualifies as a half story. But that is original to the house. And we are seeking to increase the floor area so that we can add some closets to the house. There's no cook closet front. Had a small mudroom and enclosed porch. And the reason for these is because, and, and the reason why I feel that this is a very insignificant increase in bulk, which is the, I, I, is the goal for the F A R code, at least that's my understanding. Because we're actually enclosing, this is already a recess here. There's a little porch here we're closing in, and that is about 27 square feet or so. Our addition actually is, total size addition is 59 square feet. But there's a portion of that, 25 square feet, that's already here that we're enclosing. On the side to do the mudroom, and this, the areas in blue are already spaces that exist. And inside, this is a porch, slightly bigger than our proposed mudroom, and we're planning to enclose it. Side of the house and a side entry. The blue over here is a side porch, which is not used. It doesn't have privacy, it needs to be renovated, and we'd like to capture that and use that as a playroom for the house. And the areas that are in yellow here are all the only new floor areas. And really, this is just so that we have a way to step into the house and fit that closet in there. And this is just simply because we need some clearances to make the kitchen work. And we went over those floor tanks last time. This is the existing floor plan, and there's no closet on the first floor at all. It's a very awkward situation, so we're trying to add a small addition, as small as can be, just so that we can add that cook closet over here. It's very congested and tight, so we wanted to just have this small addition that's about, I think that this is, the porch is like 56 square feet and the addition's like 27, just so we can have a closet and entrance into the kitchen. And this is the existing porch, which is not used and needs to be renovated. No changes to floor area on the other floors, but just for information, this is the attic, which is really a half story. And I think this is probably originally used for servants quarters.
Sure, yeah.
We have, I'm going to show you also. Oh, this is our new floor plan. I showed you the existing demolition plan, showing this bump out is only three feet so that we can add a closet here. It's mudroom, part of it's inside the kitchen, part of it's out to minimize the size of it, to add a closet entry here. And this playroom is the same size as the. Second floor hasn't changed and the third floor is what we discussed. It's a half story, finished attic. This is our elevation that we also want to dress up the house, because the house is very nondescript in front. And we find to take advantage of, take the opportunity to create a nice facade. It's almost like the house, front of the house, the back of the house looks like the front. And this half, this side of the house is, just doesn't have any, doesn't have that much character. So, that also adds a lot to the appearance and aesthetics for the house. On the side, this is our new, this is where we would like to fill in the porch so we can make it a usable space and use it as a playroom. This is the rear of the house, you see how beautiful that side is, it's facing the back. This is the small bump out for the kitchen, which is really just to give us some clearances around the island there. And this is our new mudroom entrance. We have some photographs of the house that I had seen last time. This is the front entrance, can you see it?
Yep.
And about the word nondescript, replace that. This is the porch on the side that we plan to fill in. It's, our, actually, mudroom isn't quite, isn't even quite as big as that. And this is the porch on the side that we'd like to use. And some photographs of the attic to show, it's that old plaster, old doors and trams, it's original to the house.
But you have stairs going up to the attic, is that right?
Yes. I also wanted you to show you this comparative analysis that we didn't discuss very much last time. But we do have a comparison of seven properties. This is a area, a map of the area of properties, since 47 Arts Avenue West, this is one Hancock. And of the seven properties here, five of the seven are nonconforming in floor area. And the one next door is actually very similar. We are proposing 4,765 square feet, they have 4,719. And they also have an undersized lot, they have just under 17,000 square feet, we're just over. So, you know, I think that this floor area is in keeping with the floor areas in the neighborhood. But, you know, I, as I said in my letter, I think that, I remember when the code came about, I don't know, 18 years ago, with different floor area and ratio, and my understanding was that it was to limit bulk. And the amount of bulk we're adding to the house is a very tiny amount, because a lot of those structures already exist. It's only about 51 square feet, if you just look at the floor area that actually gives bulk to this house. And I don't think it's really, and I went over this with Ed Merron after our last meeting, that, you know, this really is, because it's measuring bulk, the, what's happening up on the attic level, whether it's a finished bedroom or just storage, it still needs to be added into that calculation for floor area ratio. Which is the reason why this is over.
The reason you're over is because of the third floor, is what you're saying.
Which is really officially, I think, a half story.
And it's, it's a half story because of the clearance? Is that what makes it a half story, that the height?
First, because of the gables.
Because of the half, the area of the, also, a half of half of this area is your space. But when we do the floor area ratio calculation, we have to include finished attic space if, no matter how it's used.
If an attic is finished 100%, it has to be included 100% into the floor area ratio. That's what the code states. So, because the attic is finished completely, it has to be included. Also, the ceiling height of 50%, of less than 50%, it is, has a full ceiling height. But yes, the gables do come in, so it is a half story, it's not a third floor. It's a finished attic, not a third floor.
Correct. But that's already included. I mean, really, what you're looking to do is add, essentially porch, the mudroom, and about, what'd you say, three feet, give or take for a closet. And that's really what you're looking to do here. It's just that you're over because there's a finished third floor, essentially.
So, when looking at the calculations, the first, second floor attic and then, you know, including the garage, everything, if you don't consider the attic, we're at 3,650, which doesn't actually put us over. We're within the F A R. What puts us over is ones we have to add to attic, which we have to be considered finished. So, we are over by 253 square foot, you know, square feet, that's what puts us over.
But just, just so I understand, my, my, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that you would have to include the attic, whether it's finished or unfinished, given that you have stairs up there and it's more than 7, so a half feet.
Correct, exactly. If it was, if it was a pull down stair, it would be calculated differently.
Right.
Yes.
If it was unfinished, it wouldn't be considered, et cetera.
And a, a portion of it is finished and a portion is unfinished, in short.
Correct, yes.
Can you remind me, is it something that Ed Merron now wants you to legalize in order to get a C O L or something like that? There was something, I think.
Originally, he, so we, it came about, because when we were doing these calculations for floor area, we had not included the attic, and he said we had to include it. But the, the attic was always part of the C O L.
But I wanted to clarify something that, he said that this is not relevant to whether that has a legal status or not. Because there's some, like, confusing things with the property card.
Right, that's what I was confused about, actually.
In a certain way, no matter what.
Right.
Whether it's legal or not, whether, no matter what the use is, once you have a staircase going up there in a certain height, you have to include it in the, in the.
Got it, okay.
But you, it's been included since you walked in the door the first time?
Yes. Yes, we never left now.
No, 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 we're not, yeah. I mean, the bottom line is it's just, you're over because there's a third floor, but there is, there's a third floor. So, the question is now, given the fact that you're over, are we going to allow a little bit more? Which is those blue and yellow areas, right? I mean, I'm really, you're saying the blue or the yellow areas? You're really inclusive during the blue.
In terms of bulk.
In terms of bulk, right, it would now be counted differently?
Yes, because this is not important.
Exactly, exactly. So, it's not adding to the bulk, but it is adding to the F A R.
And again, I think from an aesthetic point of view, the changes you're making to the facade are probably making a more attractive house. I mean, to play devil's advocate, imposing things that are currently open does in fact add bulk. I mean, just from a, from a visual standpoint.
Sure.
I mean, it may, on balance, be a good thing.
The problem with these porches, they're not useful, they need to be renovated, it's time. And especially this one, it's not in a good place, not private, it's not usable. So, it's there, it's a structure, and the floor doesn't have any kid-friendly type space. We'd like to enclose it.
If you have the information on the, the square footage, the, the third floor, whether it's an attic, a finished attic, whatever the terminology, but right now, it's about half, what's the square footage of the attic right now?
162 square feet, yeah.
100 and?
862.
862, and of that 862, how much is currently finished?
We're only counting 862.
We only use that because that's what we need to count.
862 is finished right now.
Yeah.
And the second floor is 1666, and you see it's about a half of the second floor.
862 is, is counted towards the.
Towards the F A R.
Towards the F A R.
Yes, yes.
And that's, but that's how it looks right now.
Well, no, I mean, half of it is, there's two or three what are set up as bedrooms, correct? I was up there today, actually.
These are the three unfinished spaces.
Okay.
These are unfinished. And then this is the, the roof that's over.
That was that picture?
This part of the house. So, this is all unfinished, this is all unfinished. This is what's 862, which is what would be considered.
Is that the back of the house, which is the back of the house?
There.
This is the back.
Okay, okay.
So, these are.
Right.
This is the roof coming in.
Those are the dormers?
And then this is the, the.
And it's a steep roof line, as I recall.
Yes.
See, there are no dormers up here?
No dormers.
Yeah.
But in the back of the house, we have these three dormers up here, see, up here in the roof line.
And then this is that unfinished portion.
And that other section is finished.
Right, and that's finished. Yeah, we use it as finished.
So, nothing upstairs is, is changing?
Nothing upstairs is changing, no.
We're not doing anything about it, just the calculation.
Is there any comments from board members?
I, I guess plainly concerned, it looks, it makes sense in many ways. We have in the past, I think, been up around people who plot property recently and now want to, with at least constructive knowledge, that they were already, you know, out of variance or needed a variance, and then come in for a, for a variance, as opposed to people who've been there for a long time. I'm not saying I'm against it, I'm simply noting that, that we do have, that has been part of the conversation sometimes.
Can you remind me, just percentage wise, how, how much are you over the F A R existing? And then how much is it?
This thing is. 4,112, and we're proposing 4,765, so 253 square feet.
The current house exceeds the allowable by 558 square feet.
The calculation, yes, they're over by 14%.
By 14%, so they're over by 14%.
No, yeah.
This is a typo, it's 252 square feet.
That's our increase. But the overage that exists must be about 940 square feet, something like that. The difference between, between this and that. Maximum.
Yeah, that sounds a little.
The, the numbers that are here, I'm taking these numbers.
558. My letter's correct, sorry. 558.
558.
Oh, you're absolutely. For the, yes.
About 14% I think.
So, it's taking into it just around 20% over allowable. Um, over allowable. Okay, any other comments from board members? Um, so a lot of what we've discussed when we've talked about F A R, and some of it mostly does actually have to do with, with attics, right? So a lot of times, um, our concern has been builders who build houses up to the limit and then have unfinished bonus space, that then people come and say, well, we want a variance because there's unfinished bonus space. That's not what we're really dealing with here, right? I mean, your third floor, from what I saw, is essentially a third floor, but it's all been calculated. I mean, you're not finishing anything on the third floor that we, uh, that is adding to the F A R in that respect, which has been troubling to us, because we don't feel it's right for builders to use every single ounce of coverage in F A R, but sell you a house that essentially demands to be converted. Um, this is different. And the true bulk, I mean, Russ is 100% right, when you enclose open spaces, you're adding bulk. It's, it's just extremely minor in this case, and what I think you're adding not only makes sense, I think it's just so small a percentage of the overall that I'm inclined to grant the variance, so I will make a motion to do that. Does anybody want to second it?
I'll second it.
Okay, should we start with you?
Uh, yeah, I, uh, I agree, I would, yes.
Okay. Yes?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. All righty.